Welcome everybody to the Thursday, July first, two thousand and twenty-one Bowling Green Town Council Meeting. I'd like to call to order, and we do have a quorum. Uh, welcome all, and please, uh, stand and let's, uh, have a pledge of allegiance, sit a flag. Alright, the town, town attorney is running a little late, she ran into some traffic. Uh, I told her leave early, but eventually she didn't leave early enough. But now the storms kept, it's got things slowed down, but as soon as she gets here, she will be joining in with us. Uh, first things up is, uh, uh, public comments. Which is reverse on here, it should be, it says member comments, but it should be, uh, public comments and then members comment afterwards. So with that change, we'll have public comments, uh, I would like to open public comments. If you have any comments, please come up, state your name and your address, and try to keep everything in about three minutes or so, or if we go a little bit longer, that's fine. We don't have a lot going on. Public comment is now open.
Good evening, my name is Jisung Baye, I'm originally from South Korea, and I am now an American citizen, living in Fairfax County. For cultural reasons, Chinese people believe that a person's body should remain intact after death. As a result, people in China do not want to donate their organs. Yet suddenly, in the early two thousands, Chinese hospitals began advertising short wait times for vital organs. Where did all these human organs come from? Extensive and credible reports have revealed that the Chinese Communist Party, CCP, has been killing prisoners of conscience, most of them Falun Gong practitioners, in order to sell their organs. A prominent international human rights organization recently stated, "First organ harvesting has been committed for years throughout China, on a significant scale, and Falun Gong practitioners have been one, and probably the main source of organ supply." You may find additional documentation in the handsout we provided. China has become a major international center for organ transplant, and many American patients travel there for this purpose. In fact, a Northern Brazilian resident recently received an offer from China of a kidney transplant for fifty thousand dollars. This issue should concern us here in Bowling, Bowling Green Town, because members of our community who need an organ might consider traveling to China for a transplant. Here in the U.S., the wait time for a matching kidney or liver can take several years, but in China, they can supply a match in a matter of a week. Can you imagine finding out after the fact that your new organ was taken from a person who had been imprisoned for his religious beliefs, and then executed so the CCP could sell you his organ? Please consider passing a resolution alerting our residents and our medical professionals about this issue, so they may make an, inform the decision before traveling to China for an organ transplant. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, that's really, really bad news. Is anybody else would like to speak? Yes, ma'am?
The mayor asked me to explain the lotus flower you have, that's in Chinese standard for "people keep his or her high moral standard even in the bad environment." I hope you like it.
Thank you. I'm gonna hang it in my truck mirror. It's very nice, thank you.
My name is Tiny Tang, I'm originally from China, and I'm now a U.S. citizen, living in Fairfax County. I would like to offer additional comments on first organ harvesting in China. Falun Gong is a spiritual practice involving gentle exercises, meditation, and the virtues of truthfulness, compassion, and tolerance. It was introduced to the public in nineteen ninety-two, and quickly gained popularity because of its many health and wellness benefits. By nineteen ninety-nine, one hundred million people were practicing in China alone. Because of Falun Gong's immense popularity and its emphasis on spirituality, the Chinese Communist Party, CCP, considered it a threat. As a result, the head of the CCP launched the persecution of Falun Gong in July nineteen ninety-nine. Countless practitioners have been tortured, killed, or disappeared to this day. Shortly after the persecution began, the number of organs available for transplant suddenly increased in China. Standing beside me is Trinh Yen Wan, a Virginia resident and a survivor of the CCP's persecution. She spent almost six years in prison for telling people about Falun Gong. During her imprisonment, Ms. Wan was forced to do slave labor for up to eighteen hours a day. One of the items she made was crap like she is holding now. In fact, she got this from Walmart. She was also blood tested to determine the compatibility of her organs for a potential transplant. If someone goes to China for a transplant, this could very possibly result in the deaths of an innocent Falun Gong practitioner. Recently, an Orange County lady told us she really have traveled to China to get organ transplant. The issue of first organ harvesting in China had been underreported in the U.S. media. In response, a total of sixteen counties city in Virginia, including Caroline, Louisa. King William recently passed the resolution to educate the city residents about the practice, and today, I ask you to do the same. Please introduce and pass a resolution to raise awareness of this issue. Around one hundred local residents has signed the petition to support this request. Your action will help prevent the citizens of Bowling Green Town from becoming the unwed, unwed accomplices to the murder of innocent people. It will also help educate our citizens that the Chinese people and the Chinese Communist Party are not one and the same. Thank you very much. Happy July four.
Our, that's our, our town manager right there, Allison. Uh, get with her and get the information, and maybe she can work up a resolution that we can maybe get to our next meeting and see what we can do. Alrighty, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at public comments, please?
Good evening, Mayor Council, Bonnie Cannon, South Main Street. Good to see all you here tonight. Uh, I asked staff when I came in, how did I speak about the trash when y'all wasn't discussing it till the end? So I just got this copy and I just glanced at it like five minutes ago. So I wasn't aware of the change that's proposed, I guess, to Wednesday. I don't like that. And I have forever requested two times a week, especially in the heat. I know y'all like me, you like crabs and shrimp and all this good stuff, but I get maggots in my cans, and I don't like that. And also, I was just glancing right here. It says, I'm on page seventy-three. Per units, I don't have a recycling unit, so am I supposed to be getting a discount? All I, all I have is the trash, and I don't have a recycle container and don't need it. So I'm just curious, am I getting charged for it and I'm not using it? Just asking.
Get ahold of Josh, he'll be, he'll be glad to get you a recycle can.
I don't want one, don't need one.
Other than that, it's all the same, sorry. No discounts for only having one can.
And I have one other comment, I, I wish it was another day. Monday after weekend is a good day to pick up trash, it'd be nice if trash would be on Monday and Friday. It really would.
Fridays is out the question, because when they have a holiday on Monday, then it pushes Saturdays into picking up trash, and then that doesn't always guarantee, and then the trash cans are sitting out on the streets on the weekends, which doesn't look good for the town. Uh, Wednesdays are only date, we'll discuss this in our meeting tonight, though, about it.
And furthermore, I still feel like residents should have the option to opt out. I just think that is, should be the way that it is. I'm going to the land, I just came from the dump three minutes ago when I came to the meeting, to take some stuff, but I didn't get in the can today. So I'm running to the landfill and paying for trash, and I don't feel like I should have to do that. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to Council? Seeing none, hearing none, second call. Third call, I'd like to close public comments. Uh, we now opening up, uh, comments for council members, if anybody has anything that they would like to, uh, uh, bring up that they've done during the week, or any questions or anything about what was said during, uh, public comments?
I'd like to say congratulations to our chief, we have a newlywet.
I'm sorry, let me turn this on. But yeah, I got the phone call, they were leaving the next day, I got a surprise as anybody else. So congratulations, Chief, from, from the whole council. Jeff, you got something?
Yes, yeah, uh, yes, congrats again. Um, I just want to thank the, the ladies for coming out and, and speaking. I appreciate you putting the effort in that you all have been putting in here and in every locality that you visited. I, I got to see them at Caroline when they were there, uh, good presentation that they had, so just, just thank you. And, um, yes, we'll, we'll talk about the trash probably at length later on. Um, that, that's all I've got, thanks.
Ms. Gaines? Oh, okay, anybody else has anything they'd like to say? Arthur?
I was just gonna say, uh, I received the information back from the budget meeting in regards to the funding from the state for the fire department. I passed that information along to them, so I appreciate that. And then the other, I was notified by a citizen yesterday that there's a few street lights that are out, and they're from Dominion. So, um, it was over here on Chase Street, so they just wanted to make us aware, um, that they're out, so that we're not, you know, that we get them fixed.
Yeah, usually, uh, the chief and them, if, if they see them, usually they'll stop and write them down, 'cause you gotta write the pole number down and everything, and then call it in, and, 'cause if you don't, they're like, oh, what's the number? So might as well get it all at one time, so, thank you, sir, appreciate that. Uh, anybody else, before we move on to staff reports? Alrighty, uh, staff reports, Police Department Monthly Report, does anybody have any questions for the chief on that?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Um, is it possible to get a, um, post speeding analysis in about four months, so we can determine the effectiveness of our new radar machine?
Yes, ma'am.
Cool.
Yes, ma'am, I'm gonna put a packet together, um, uh, when we deploy it in certain areas that y'all would like traffic information on. I'll, uh, print those off and provide them to you before the meeting, so you'll have them.
Okay, great. And the standing pole radar detector coming off of Route Two was not in operation yesterday?
Yeah, I, I sat out there for about an hour today and noticed the same thing, I think it was showing like twelve, thirteen mile an hour, and I tried calling the company, but just waiting on a call back.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Alright, anybody else, before we move on to public works? Alright, anybody got anything for public works? Josh?
I just wanna, uh, I just wanna highlight real quick that the water project, hopefully, um, the base station for the antenna and everything is up, electric will be run hopefully by the end of this month. Um, hopefully, replacement of boxers meters, um, will be, uh, beginning the end of July or August, just depending on product availability. But that's what we're aiming for now. After everything is replaced and completed, that's when Tracy and Judy will initiate monthly billing. Um, just wanted everybody to kind of start getting aware of that. Um, town citizens to be aware that their bills are gonna change, because the new meters are gonna pick up every ounce of, you know, water going through there. Uh, the older one, older meters are kind of half and half of, doesn't pick up some, picks up some, so now it's gonna collect it accurately. So if you're using more water before, it may not be picking up all that water, uh, so your bill may be a little lower, but it may end up being a little bit higher. Uh, we're just trying to prepare everyone for that. Um, we will send out notices, uh, we'll put door knockers, um, before construction, if we're gonna be working in that area, so everybody will be aware of. Contractors will be in everyone's yard, uh, so just kind of wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, uh, just in case we begin construction before, uh, August meeting, so.
Josh, who is doing the work? Who's the contractor?
So Korn Main won the bid, and they subcontracted, uh, Bitter Creek to do the replacement, uh, meters and boxers.
Okay, and are they advanced smart water meters, or what kind of water meters are they?
Um, so they are sensitive Ipro meters, uh, which are radio read meters, so, um, Judy and Tracy will be in the office with the software. Um, so when anybody like, like, say for billing, once they go to bill, they click a button, it'll read all the meters in town. Um, if for some reason, like there's a tree in the way or something, has blocking that meter, they'll be aware of, hey, we didn't get a reading from this house, we can go out and check it out and see what's going on. Um, but pretty much every meter is gonna be radio read, um, without, you know, obviously, like, issues of damaged meters on the phone. Um, so they'll be able to read it, so if a customer has a question as far as, "Hey, you know, my water bill's high, what's going on?", they'll be able to look at a trend and see when someone's using water, how often, things like that. Um, so if someone potentially has a runny toilet or a leak, it'll show up and alert them, and then they can alert us, or they can call the customer. So they are advanced, the answer is, they are advanced.
Okay, um, so when the contractor was selected, were we aware that they might subcontract out to somebody? And would it have been possible for the town to have utilized the people they're utilizing as subcontractors?
Um, so all of that had started before I was here, um, so it was part of USDA funding, so we, the, any part of funding, like, that anybody goes through, whether it's the town or any government, goes through that process, and then they have a set of rules that have to be followed, um, so whenever bid out, that's how, you know, it was written. Um, so it's probably possible, I mean, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I, um, I heard we had a water breakover on Hilldale. Right outside of three oh, on, on the other side of three oh one at Chase Street?
We did, so part of the next, another phase of that water project is water main replacement, which also includes service line moving. Um, so where we thought their service line went to the meter from our main was not actually where it was, so when the contractor was doing their work, they hit it.
Oh, they hit it, okay.
And pulled it out, um, so the town was still responsible for it, because we had marked it wrong.
Right.
So part of that, the whole water project, uh, the next phase, or the other phase, is water main replacement, but also mapping and getting water service lines that are, you know, running, maybe like two yards before they get to a meter, or they're in the backyard, or things like that, put them in the right of way, so we know where they're at, and we're not in someone's yard, or some, or neighbor's yard.
So that was, that was the, uh, our contractor putting in the box, is that what did it, or was it a different contract? 'Cause I know we hadn't had nothing out there before, and that's why it kind of caught my attention that we had one, and...
Yeah, so, um, the service line, instead of coming straight from the main, actually came off somewhere else. When the cable company, I guess their contractor they had was born for their cable, hit it,
Okay.
and it pulled it out and broke the box and everything.
I've been wondering if we had old lines out there too, because I'm like, we've never had anything out there, and it's like, what, you know, what, what, you know?
They are, they are old lines, and those are actually part of the, uh, what...
Are they part of the upgrade? Okay, alright. Alright, anybody else has anything? Jean?
Josh, thank you for, um, I suppose you were responsible for getting, uh, someone else other than David Brooks. It was nice to see Mr. Landfill back again, so I think it's nice to share this around when you can.
Yes, ma'am, and, and, uh, moving forward, uh, we'll be doing more business, I, I, I won't say with who, but...
Share it well. Yeah, we don't need, you know, make people mad at us, share it well, put them in a basket, it's a rule, okay. Alright, uh, Joe Elsa's not here tonight, but, uh, I know y'all have looked it over, but you got Music on the Green starting on August sixth, going through September tenth. Uh, there's also application in here for the car show, which is really a big turnout. I mean, it's a really big car show that we have at the festival. Uh, other than that, oh, uh, this isn't, this is just something I thought of, it doesn't really come under this, but since we do deal with the bank water, but Sherry Grabby, uh, retired this week, I think yesterday, uh, from the bank. So, yeah, uh, so we're gonna miss her, I know she was a big help for us there at the bank on getting, uh, uh, money, sponsorships and stuff. So she's no longer gonna be there, she retired, so, uh, good luck and good wishes to her, I know she's ready for it. Uh, Town Clerk Treasury? Anybody have anything for the Town Clerk?
I just have a couple of questions on the infamous Town Hall rentals. So on the twelve Town Hall activities, it says class, and there's no charges, why, what is that for?
They're the, um, the, the activities, the yoga, and the, um, what's the other? Yeah, that is an error, that should have had a, that should have a fee, a fee there.
Alright, and on Election Day?
Yes, that's also an error. We get a hundred dollars for that, um, the elections to come in. We did receive, it's kind of an error, but not, we received, um, two checks from them. We needed clarification, we haven't gotten that yet, um, but we do have the money, we just can't deposit it yet until they give us clarification. So while we got two hundred dollars instead of one hundred.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Anybody else have anything?
I will say that we are, you know, finishing up, trying to get to the year end, uh, two thousand and twenty-one. Yesterday was a very exciting day, we had a lot of stuff to cram into one day, and I would just like to thank Judy for her help and, uh, and also Allison, we, uh, worked really good together as a team.
Okay, uh, this, uh, weekend, or, uh, next week, are we off Monday and Tuesday in here? Are we closed Monday and Tuesday, just Monday, what's our hours?
Well, yes, if you'd like us to be, but no. Yeah, we'll be off Monday.
But I mean, there, you know, a lot of people are, you know, they're observing Fourth of July on Monday, and I've heard a couple other, like, town, uh, the, uh, school board up at, uh, Spotsylvania's closed on the fifth and sixth. I was like, well, what is this, a new holiday thing? So anyhow.
We'll just hit Monday, so the, the business officers will be pleased.
Something new I ain't heard about.
Alright, thank you, Council.
Yes, uh, Town Manager's report, uh, I would like to say that this is Allison's first full council meeting from being, uh, assigned as interim Town Manager, and so far, I think she's done a fabulous job. And anybody have any questions for her, please, just dig into it.
I would just like to thank you for getting that application out on time.
Well, thank you.
Oh, yes, the, uh, uh, in, in case some of y'all weren't aware of, uh, if council had not acted as properly as we did, that we most likely would have had missed out on that over a million dollars from the government on that stimulus package. Because the application had to came, be in, I think when Allison got in, it was due within a week, if I'm not mistaken. And, uh, none of us were aware of that. Uh, so if we hadn't hired somebody, and Allison wasn't aware of it, and on top of it, we would have had missed out. So I really do like to thank her for being on the ball with that, and dedicating the time and the energy to make sure it got done right and got turned in.
Thank you, and I'll be covering the update to that later in the...
Yes, ma'am. Anybody have anything for her, and if not, we'll move on.
I did have a couple highlights, um, the, there's an MOU of Caroline County on the town parking lot, and the, the sheriff's, uh, cars park on the last row, up and down the last row, and, uh, when there's larger events in Town Hall, they have to move all of their cars to another location. So because there is an MOU, and they, um, are so good about, um, making sure that our lot is maintained, um, they, what I'd like to do is just allow them to leave their cars, because they have, um, said that, that their parking lot is available right across the street, and probably even closer to the front door of Town Hall. Um, it would save them a lot of time, and so unless there's some problem, then we would just allow them to have their cars remain there. Um, and the other issue is, um, I attended, uh, the Caroline County Board of Supervisors meeting, and there was a VDOT presentation on the Smart Scale Project. And, um, so Jeff Sealy asked them several questions. Um, he is meeting with them about the impacts to, uh, citizens, his citizens outside the town, and that may be impacted by this, um, so it looks like it's an ongoing issue. If council would, uh, of course, count, uh, council would have to bring it back to the table in order to open it up and make a different decision. VDOT did say it, it, a different decision could be made, but it would have to be soon. But at least, if council would like me to bring back information, um, as we continue through the process, um, or even, uh, whatever council would like me to do, I'd be happy to do, but, um, bring back ongoing information um, as it arises on that project. And, um, the one last thing that I have is the, uh, the stormwater management assistance. It came to my attention shortly after I arrived here, that, uh, I'll back up and give a little history. Um, the, many years ago, uh, several years ago, the state saw that the Chesapeake Bay wasn't the, they felt it wasn't, uh, all their efforts, it wasn't cleaning the bay well enough, so they started imposing, uh, more stringent stormwater management, um, requirements. And localities at that time, the DEQ allowed localities to either opt in and, and handle the stormwater by themselves, the, the review and the oversight, or opt out, and then DEQ would do all the work. Um, so when a developer develops a project over an acre. Then he takes his stormwater, um, application to the state and then we receive approval back. Um, for some reason, uh, and most localities, uh, there was a lot of analysis done by larger localities. Uh, I remember it very well, Hanover, Chesterfield, um, the city of Richmond, Henrico. And they said it was too expensive for them to oversee even larger localities. Um, but for some reason Bowling Green decided to opt in. It's an extremely expensive, um, task, uh, but. There's no opting out at this point. I called DEQ. They said they just could not oversee any more projects. Um, and so I just wanted to thank Josh Erby for stepping up to the plate. He is going to go to the training. I have had the training, um, and I had provisional certification for a while. Um, but Josh is going to go ahead and take the training. And, um, we do have some projects that, that need, that will need this stormwater oversight. Um, it would be very costly to the town to, um, to have to oversee it. And, uh, uh, by doing it by third party. So Josh has agreed to take the classes and get certified. Uh, so that he can be our stormwater representative. And that's all I have.
Now, on, on that stormwater management, the, uh. The firm that is doing the project, they're responsible for paying us back for that storm management, uh, certificate, correct?
No.
No?
No, our fee schedule is, I believe, five hundred dollars, but it's going to be in the thousands. I actually. I'm trying to, to make that happen, um, but. Um, but so far, uh, I've, I'm working on it. I'll just, I'll bring an update back on that. Um, that's a smaller project, but we have more coming. So we really need to move forward and get somebody in place.
Um. Yeah, because I'm a, you know, I'm aware of a couple of, so, uh, yeah, we're gonna need it. Uh, I know you got that one with the, uh, storage unit company.
Yes, that's the, that is.
That's the main one that we're dealing with right now.
Yes.
Right. Uh, and I know, uh, Arthur would love to hear anything that you can come up with on the SMART program and the rest of council would too.
Okay.
Uh, so anything you come up with, uh, and hear on, you know, keep us informed on it so that we can come up with a good decision when we need to.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Allison, just out of curiosity, what are the three violations?
Um, I, there are three violations that I've heard about. Or saw myself when I was out doing, um, a drive around inspection of the town. Um, there's a dilapidated structure on Maury. I need to get more information about, uh, a site that's behind the Pizza Hut. And there is a, um, there's an issue that is, uh, there's two issues on Maury. Um, one on one, on one side, uh, on one end of the street and one on the very end of the street.
How to feel.
So I have those, I have those three so far that I've seen or heard of. Um, and I'll be handling those within the next few days to start, uh, to start with the violation notices.
I put the house on Milford Street down there on the right-hand side. It's got weeds up like this.
And that one, that's the fourth. Yes.
Yeah, we had to, two years ago, I think, uh, get it cut and have them reimburse us for it already.
Mm-hmm.
That was just moved.
Did it move? Okay. Never mind. All right. Anybody else have anything for the Town Manager? All right. Moving on to consent agendas, uh, we didn't have anybody beginning the meeting dispute anything to be pulled out. So, uh, I'd like to hear a motion to, uh, accept the consent agendas as they are.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
I got a motion by Jeff.
Second.
Second by Jean. All in favor, raise your right hand. Consent agenda's passed. All right, moving on to unfinished business. Joe Elsa's not here. So it's, uh, an EDA work form or work, uh, sheet on how they would like to spend their ten thousand dollars. I guess they want to get allocated. And, uh, you look on the back of the, of the sheet. They've got down the items, uh, graphic designs, five hundred. Two-pocket lined folder with business card, slit quality of, quantity of a thousand for fifteen hundred. Printing tiered inserts, custom paper sizes for a thousand, postage a thousand, amount of legal fee, but I don't know what that is. Thirty-five hundred. Then a facade improvement grant program they want to try to bring back in for, for twenty-five hundred. Totally out for ten thousand, which is the exact amount that, uh, that we had put out there for them. And I guess we're looking for a, uh, this is for discussion only. I mean, sorry, a, uh, motion. Or to, uh, allocate, is that right? To allocate the ten thousand dollars to them, is that what we're doing? Appropriate, excuse, wrong word. So, uh, like to get a motion and then we'll go for discussion.
Okay, well, I'll make the motion to appropriate the ten thousand dollars for the EDA.
Yeah, I got a motion by, uh, Jeff. Do I have a second? Got a second by Jean. We have any discussions?
All right, Arthur? I, I got one, I guess, looking at the, uh, two-pocket linen folder with business cards. I guess that's a thousand folders, correct? Not just a thousand business cards.
Right, that got me too.
Okay.
Yes, it, it's the packet.
Okay. Understood. Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, what are they gonna be printing? What are they gonna be advertising? Three oh one or what? What area?
Yeah, it seems, they want, they, they want to push the three oh one corridor for, uh, uh, residential, commercial. Um, development because we haven't been doing anything. We've got water and sewer out there. Uh, that we're not getting anything off of, making no revenue, but we're paying a hefty. Uh, loan amount every month and the residents that are out there now are paying it on. So, yes, it's to more or less push the three oh one corridor. Anybody else?
I, I guess I hadn't had time to research it. I had heard that there was a potential for developments out there. So if that is moving forward, then would it be, I guess. Would we want to allocate the funds to that if there's already development in the process? I guess what I'm asking about for, for this.
Uh, very fractional. There, there is so much acreage out there and so many different owners. It would still, I would think be appropriate.
What they're talking about right now, and if they, if any of this goes through. It could be five to ten years down the road. Uh, and they're talking about on the left-hand side, if you're going north. You still have the whole right-hand side that doesn't have anything. And then also you still have some developed, undeveloped land in between. So, you know, we need to, you have, if you do have a residential going in and then you want commercial space out the front. So you need to advertise that you have commercial available, you know, so, uh, we have nothing now. And we haven't been getting into that. So, I mean, it is a big vital, uh, means to, to market that. Because we have all the millions of dollars that we put in the ground out there that we get nothing off of now.
I guess I'm.
I, I understand what you're thinking.
I'm just a little confused if it was, like, we specified that to my understanding of mixed use, so it could be residential or commercial.
Right.
So whereas, uh, historically it was commercial up against three oh one road frontage. Um, with the mixed use, that means that it could be residential or, like you said, commercial. So I was just curious. I just heard that in the last week and, you know, sometimes you gotta, uh, look into it and see if those are.
Right.
Processed through. So I just didn't want us to put the funding towards it if there was already development in the process and what I would be.
Right. Yes.
We did meet Monday night, EDA. I'm sorry, you're Elsa's not here, but just briefly. There was talks about, A, we talked about the ten thousand that we need to put, you know, the work plan's been submitted. But there was a discussion about rethink Main Street as well as, uh, new business. I don't know how much I can say, but it, it is talk about a couple of developments trying to, uh, get it norfew being one. Which is the commercial side that you're talking about, a little residential as well as, uh, uh. We're having them looking at something that would be totally residential town, some, some single family home. That is something that they're discussing now.
Right. Right. Um, yeah, yeah, there is, there is some talks, but that could be years down the road and that's not all the profit. So we still have quite a bit, so, you know, we, I strongly believe that we do need something for out there. Because by myself, one paying taxes out there as well on it and nothing's been done. And I know a lot of people, they're very frustrated that nothing's been done with the three oh one. This would be the first thing that has been, that's gone out there for three oh one. And anything we get helps the town immensely in, uh, revenues. So, but, but I do see your point. But if we don't try. You know, who knows what might happen. But, uh.
My only question would be the legal fees, you know, just questioning because we have an attorney on.
They have their own.
Is, uh, everybody satisfied?
Well, I had a, I had a thing to add. Um, just, just want to speak to three oh one real quick. Um, cause we did just, you know, in the last couple of months amend the whole comp plan for, for that mixed use, uh, aspect and everything. Um, anything like in the pipeline at this moment, you know, being discussed about anywhere. That, that is on those developers' own, uh, that's not really with all of the new information, new comp plan type things. Anything that they would do from this point forward would be hopefully with our comp plan in mind, publishing more what, uh, what council has decided they want to do with that land rather than what people have come up with their own based off the old history about there. Um, and, uh, that, that one thing mulling around, I, I, I really do believe is like less than an eighth of the total acreage of three oh one. So. Bear that in mind too. And, um, with anything that may or may not come, uh, before the council. Um, it will be on us to see how that aligns with our, our comp plan. And if it meets the criteria that, again, hopefully the EDA will be trying to inform the potential people about. That's about it.
All right, with that, uh, do I have a, we have a motion, we have a second? Uh, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, those opposed? All right, unanimous, uh, motion carries. Moving on to new business. This is where Allison gets up and gets to talk, tell us about our. New trash collector.
Shiplet's waste disposal, uh, started collecting trash today, July first. And they have requested a change in the collection date from Thursdays to Wednesdays. Um, they understand that. They had to wait for a decision tonight and then they, at their own expense, would send out information to all the customers to make sure that they knew, then, then they will go back and collect any trash on Thursdays for a certain amount of time, um, to, to make sure that they, that everyone becomes aware of the change. So they respectfully requested a change. And recycling and trash is a dual truck.
Right. I just see no problem today and they even come around putting stickers on the trash cans.
They were, they were starting that today, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they didn't get me yet.
Yeah, first, yeah, July first they started, yeah.
Um, so with their request, uh, did they give any detail for a reason? And if we were to deny said request, what trouble would that, uh, be giving them?
If it's denied, they will pick it up on Thursdays. Um, it was just, they had, uh. Um, they have another client on Thursdays, so they've requested Wednesday.
I think, I think when they bid this, that the person didn't quite understand about the other client or something. So before, you know, this was like, uh, I guess almost a month ago that they requested, about the same time you came on. That, uh, they sent in a request to get it changed. Uh, and that they will pay for everything, you know, it's mail outs and all that to make sure that everybody, you know, and I thought it was quite grateful that, graceful that they would come out for maybe a, a couple of months on Thursday. Or a month on Thursday to make sure that everybody's got picked up who didn't get the notice.
And if council approves it, then it would start August first.
Okay, August first. So they would do this month and then they'll give the time, get the mail outs. I mean, to me, Wednesday is, is closer from our weekend trash than letting us sit there another day for Thursday.
Oh, I, I say that one. That was what I was thinking myself.
It is closer. Uh, you know, and everybody uses the weekend to put the crabs and their.
Mm-hmm.
Fish and their chicken and their barbecue stuff all in on the weekend and then it's got to sit there till Thursday. Uh, so one more day to me is, is, is better. And, and it doesn't matter to me if it gets picked up Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. You know, but, uh, it's up to y'all to.
Mr. Mayor, what's gonna happen? What's gonna happen next week with the holiday? Fourth of July Sunday falls on Monday, like you said, is it gonna be Thursday?
It's gonna be a day later, I can tell you because she was at my house today. It's gonna be just like it's been before. It's gonna move up one day.
Right.
And I would like to make a motion to go ahead and accept it on Wednesdays.
Yeah, I got a motion.
We're very lucky to get them because it's cheaper than the one we have now. And I personally don't see anything wrong with having, um, two trash cans. You know, um, I have not had that many complaints with people. I think they're happy with the way it is. And if we had stayed with waste management, it was going up a lot. So I think we're blessed to get these people.
All right, I got a, I got a motion by Jean. Do I have a second?
I'll, I'll give the second to get discussion.
By Jeff, we got discussions?
Yeah, I just have a question. Um, since, um, Ms. Cannon did bring up a valid possibility for people who may not want trash, uh, to opt out. Should we just have some discussion or thoughts or possibilities of that? Or is this a mandatory, um, I just think, you know, some kind of a courtesy of response or some thought process for us to do that?
I'm, I'm definitely conciliatory to the idea. Um, I, I believe one of the things that held it back in before would be the, um, the integration at the, at the staff bill level. Um, can't hear me? I'm sorry. I'll talk later. I, I, I think part of the problem before was, was how that would get billed and handled, uh, from, from a house to house standpoint. Uh, I wouldn't mind like pursuing, like bringing that back and seeing what the impact would be. Uh, I, I would like some info on that. Cause, you know, I, I agree. You, you, being able to say no would be nice. Um, cause I don't think. We're ever gonna be able to get to the point where we are, like offering the, the two times a week, you know, and, and there are times that I could have used two times a week. But, you know, that, that would be very expensive. But the ability to opt out, I'd, I'd pursue.
But I think the problem with that is you have to have so many people in to get it at this rate.
Right, you, yeah, you're gonna have a flat fee and if you start opting people out and somebody's got to pick up the flat fee total cost.
Yeah, I, I, I see the.
Have to raise it for other people.
The cost would probably be prohibitive, but it'd be nice to know.
It can, it can be a county nightmare, uh, because it will, you know, the contract price is gonna remain the same.
I got a question in regards to this. Um, so it states on here that they do not at this time offer dumpster services.
No, waste management is still doing that.
Okay, I was just curious because there's.
Yeah, waste management signed on to, to keep their contract to do the, uh, commercial dumpsters.
Okay, I was just confirming that because there's some resident.
No problem.
Utilize that.
Yeah. Uh, I, um, have we done with discussions? Do I have, uh?
Uh, one, one more. Um, okay, so on holidays, if we move it to Wednesday, will the holidays just bump it back to Thursday or will it still be Friday?
Yeah, it'll, it'll, it'll take just, just one day.
All right, dispense it, fine.
Yeah.
I figured.
And we're, at, at one time, remember we had it on Friday and took it to Saturday and then they had trash cans sitting around on Saturday and, and, and that's why we had it moved. All right, uh, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, opposed? All right, unanimous? Uh, trash will move to Thursday come August first, is that right? I mean, to Wednesday, August first. Thank you. I meant to say from Thursday. You did. Why? What's your reason? I didn't, I didn't, I didn't hear no abstaining.
I know you didn't. I know you missed me there. Um, I guess I abstained because I just. I know, you didn't, I know, you missed me there. Um, I guess I abstain because I just kinda feel like there is, I, I'm such a creature habit, and I guess for me to remember now it's gonna be on Wednesdays is gonna be a little bit of a pain. And I can identify with maybe other people in the community that might feel that way. I feel like we're, which I, I, I'm happy with Shiflett, but I guess I'm just empathizing with those people that, you know, cause we're changing our habits to appease them, and that's a little bit of a problem for me. For no reason, except it suits them.
I don't think that's a good enough for abstain. I mean, I can, I can see a note to it. I can see a note to it, uh.
I can, then you, you can say no, that's-
She, she ain't gonna abstain for any reason.
You know, it's, uh, abstain, it's-
Ask Andrea.
All right, what do you wanna call it?
Thank you.
All right, uh, electronic, participation in meeting policies is next.
Thank you.
Now, this is gonna be, uh, Andre's, so thank.
And riveting.
Oh, keep it short. She almost didn't make it. I thought, I totally leave early.
Brains, your traffic.
I totally leave early, but, uh.
So, it's July first, we have a whole bunch of new laws, and it's not on the agenda, but I was gonna tell you about all of them. The, the General Assembly did do a few things. One of them is they amended the electronic participation in meetings policy. Um, last year, it was possible to have a quorum physically present with people participating, council members participating remotely. And it could be done for a personal reason, up to two times in a calendar year, or for a medical reason for any number of times. The General Assembly has expanded that. Now, there's a third category of, you can participate electronically if you are needed to ca- provide medical care for a family member. And there's no limit on those numbers. They also increased the number of times that a council member can miss for a personal reason. They, um, increased it to twenty-five percent of the meetings. And so, for us, that's gonna be at least three meetings. So, there's a little bit more flexibility on that, and, you know, given the wild ride that the last year's been, I just thought we oughta get that done, like, you never know. We could have a hurricane in August, you know, which has been rather unpredictable.
Well, how about I move to approve the electronic participation in meetings policy?
I got a first by, uh, Jeff, I got a second by, uh, Ms. Gaines. Is there any discussions on this? Here or none, all in favor, raise your right hand? No sustains? All right, we're good.
Mister Mayor, if I can just, the planning commission may also want to do one of these. Just in case.
All right, now we're down to informational items. This is where, uh, our, uh, interim town manager, comes up and tells us about our, recovery funds.
So, there are recovery funds that are being administered from the federal government through the state. And we are a, one of the communities that is able to receive them. Um, you, it is based on population, and you can only receive up to seventy-five percent of the budget that was in effect in January of twenty twenty. Uh, you have to, it has to be expenses incurred between March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, and December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And there's five basic criteria. Uh, more information is in the documents, but basically, it support public health expenditures, address negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency, replace lost public sector revenue, provide premium pay for essential workers, and invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Um, although the letter from the state did indicate that it is very broad, um, as to what you can spend your funds on. Um, and I'm pleased to say that we have received the first installment of six hundred and nine thousand dollars and forty, five hundred and forty, six hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars. And we will be receiving a total of one million, two hundred and nineteen thousand, eighty-two dollars. Uh, and that, that came yesterday.
Now, do we need to, uh, I guess we need to put that into our budget. We need to amend the budget. We'll do that tonight, or we'll do it next, we have to advertise at the, the next meet. Okay, all right, thank you. Well, that's really good news, folks, I tell you. It's, and, and that we've received it already. Uh, like she said, it's, it's pretty broad on what they are, uh, what they, uh, say we could spend it on. And I know there's a few things around this town that could be, uh, that could really use a good fixing up and, uh, uh, add, uh, add some good stuff for the community. Um, cause I'm a firm believer in giving to the community, I mean, the council, the town itself. Uh, cause without the community, we wouldn't have this, you know, they're the taxpayers. And, uh, anything we can do to give back to the community is really worthwhile. Uh, without that, we have committee meetings. Did, uh, did we have anything on, uh, personnel and, uh, ordinance committee, did they meet?
Mister Mayor, I had a question for Allison on this.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, Allison, when you, when you get the funds, I know they have to be accounted for and documented and all that stuff, where we spend it. Do we set up a separate checking account specifically for those funds, or how does that work?
It, it can be done that way. Um, some localities are putting it directly into the general fund, and then some are having it separate, so, um, maybe the town attorney, would you like to? Do, okay, so I will find out if there's any, if there's any particular way that council chooses for us to do it. I know, I noticed last time it was put directly into the general fund.
All right, for auditing purposes, keeping track of everything, I mean, I would like to see it in a separate checking account, but, um, you know, it's up to council what we can agree on. I know when we get stimulus money and stuff for businesses, that's, that's the way they suggested that we do it.
We might wanna check with the auditor.
I will check, and I will come back to you with information on that. I know that when we're looking at historical information and budgets, um, that if you see a huge increase, it might skew some things, um, in the future. But everybody will remember why, I'm sure, but, um, I will come back with more information on that. Thank you.
All right, anybody else will move on to committee report then? If not, did we have, uh, personnel and ordinance committee meet? Do we have anything on that? Besides, uh, we hired a interim town manager, and that we did one interview? All right, how about streets and sidewalks?
Yes, we, we did meet, um, last week. Uh, a lot of it was catching up. It was, uh, you could call it a get-to-know-the, the new interim town manager meeting to a, a great extent, and it was a, it was a good meeting. Uh, caught up on some of the old projects that are working their way down the pipeline, and eventually you're gonna come up here, some facility improvements, um, of most relevance, I guess. Uh, we did discuss this room. Um, we did some things like modifying the tables and whatnot, but we discussed the, uh, the A V equipment, and, um, that led to after the meeting, um, trying to get a better solution in here. Um, so they, they procured a new laptop to be able to, um, hand off the, the streaming of the meetings, the recording, uh, here very shortly. Um, we're still running it down there with, with Jackie for right now, and we're trying to iron it down to a very easy push-button system, uh, for, for me to just show somebody else how to do and, and be much easier than it was in the past. But it's, it's improving each time.
I've noticed a big difference.
Uh, well, that, 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 I think the biggest thing is me figuring out where that feedback was coming from and, and eliminating that. But, uh, other than that, um, we discussed, like, surveillance cameras, uh, for the, um, buildings and other improvements, but that's about it.
Well, I noticed the, uh, handicapped spot got moved on the, uh, east side of town, uh, east side of Main Street got moved up to where it's more, uh, functionable now. Instead of being in front of the, uh, Mexican restaurants, now up where they can come off the back of their vehicle and ride onto a ramp onto the sidewalk. So, thanks to y'all and B dot for, uh, making sure that that got done. Appreciate it. And paint. All we need now is a street sign put in, and other than that, then we're legal.
So, can, can I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I just want to, we spent all that money to do this room, and a laptop was not included in the whole kit and caboodle. Is there anything else our illustrious tech guy meant?
Well, I mean, I would like to have had better cameras in here for everything. Um, the intent of the original thing, not that I'm saying that that was what I would have preferred, uh, it all would have been run from that iPad down there. The problem with that is that it was limited to a single camera angle, and it's kinda hard to get the right, everything with that. Like, now we're getting the podium as well, um, as the other. Uh, so it's, I mean, you could talk to different people and get a different opinion on what they think is better. Um, and I know I've talked to you and, you know, the multi-camera thing, I think that we, we like, and narrowing down these audio issues has been, was more of just making the time to come in here and do it.
I'm just, I guess I'm concerned as to how much more it's gonna cost us to get this right, because at the time we did this, it was, the funds were there. That's what we used them for, and it didn't happen.
Well, that's why I came in here, and, and I was fiddling with this for about three, four hours to try to figure out what to do with the equipment that was here. Because at first I was like, hey, we need to get, get a couple cameras for this, but then I was like, well, let's see if I can make the, the webcams work, and, and I was. So, that, that's five hundred dollars you don't have to worry about spending, but the laptop, um, do you a hundred percent need it? No, but to make it turnkey, you kinda do. And that's what we need.
Yeah, that's what I thought we were doing seven months ago, when we decided to put in the necessary technology in this building, so I was just, just curious.
To end your question, Mallory, I think we came up with around two thousand, but now that we don't need that, those cameras, I guess.
Yeah, it really just depends on how much the laptop ended up costing. Do you happen to know how much that laptop was?
Which is what we figured out.
Um, and, and we were able to get around that as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so the three hundred dollars. Was it that, okay, so a thousand for the laptop. And now that, that laptop is not purely for this. It was, there, there was no town hall laptop, so.
Well, that's, that's my point. When we did this eight months ago, when the gentleman came in here, unfortunately, we did not put out additional bids. It was only one person, from what I understand. That person should have said, do you have the laptop that's going to be needed to run your zooms, to run, connect with the L C D, connect? So, everything functions turnkey, and we don't have Jeff, his family, you all, and fifteen pieces of equipment that we can trip over to get this to function. That is my concern. And if that's not happened, and it hasn't, how much additional money are we gonna need to make this building technology-driven, which it needs to be? That is a cost factor for us, but it's also a revenue that we're throwing out the window if it's not functioning correctly. That's my concern.
Right now, I think you need a thirty-dollar U S B active extension. Uh, that's about all I think you need at the moment.
All right, uh, anybody else meet?
I was gonna ask, are we going to? I, I have only attended one that I'm aware of, so I don't know if.
Well, now, uh, now we, well, we have, we have meetings that are set up on a regular monthly schedule. Uh, and they're all posted to the public. They were listed out there. Uh, so I guess we just, Allison's here.
Yeah, I-
She will start.
Tell you, oh, hello, can you hear me? Okay. That, I was waiting, um, for the budget to be passed, and, um, also, because we've had so many extra meetings with the town manager, trying to look at those applicants, that I was just kinda giving us a little breath. But I was gonna talk with Allison actually tonight to try to get back on board with that, cause we do need to start already thinking about the next budget and, um, and, you know, just check in with her. Yeah.
Understood.
All right. Anything else? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
I have a motion, but Jeff, do I have a second? Second by Gene, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.